Hey, good afternoon. Let me have everyone's attention. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December workshop of the Escambia County School Board. The purpose of this workshop is an open discussion on items brought forth by the board and the superintendent and review of the agenda items for our regular board meeting. I'm asking at this time, everyone silence your phones. If you wish to speak at the public forum, you must complete a speaker request form located on the back table and bring it to the front to Ms. Harris at the front table. First item on the agenda for this evening is the fine arts performance of Escambia High School. We are excited today to have the Escambians along with their instructor, Ms. Liz Phillips. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate you students. And Mr. Hicklin as well, I think drove the bus today. Thank you, Mr. Hicklin.
Thank you to the Escambia County, Escambia High School Fine Arts Department for putting us in the right mood for today's meeting. We're moving now to, um, to item, I'm the superintendent's student council.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for allowing us to move this item up so we can get these kids, these students either back to school or wherever they may wish. I got a feeling I know which one they'll pick. Last year, we started the superintendent's council and it was quite pleasurable. I believe, Ms. Greer, you were on that council as well last year. I don't know. Okay, alright, so I know there's at least one young lady that's back with us for the second year and they really give, uh, the, the truth to me about what's going on out in the schools and it's quite a pleasure to be able to meet with them and speak with them. Ms. Pogue will get her shirt when we return from the break, but what I wanted to be able to do is give our school board the opportunity to meet these students, uh, so I'm gonna ask them to come on up as a group and then one by one, we'll see if they follow directions to tell us a little bit about themselves. Come on up, all of you. Yeah, right there. You're the first, go ahead.
Um, my name is Chrissy Forre, I go to West Florida High School. Um, I am involved in sports and clubs like SGA and track.
And what do you plan on doing when you, when you leave the Escambia County Public School System?
I plan on going to college, um, probably in Florida, but to pursue engineering and architecture.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Delaria Pogue, I go to Pine Forest High School and I'm involved in many clubs, um, here at Pine Forest High School and after high school. I plan to go to PSC and study radiology.
Thank you, Ms. Pogue.
Hi, I'm Grace Garrier and I'm in Pensacola High School. I'm a 12th grader and I'm involved in FBLA and, um, Key Club, which is practicing business leadership and community service and I would like to pursue nursing in college after high school.
Hello, I'm Maddie May Driscoll from Norview High School. I'm a senior, um, I'm involved with SGA, I'm vice president of my class. I do weightlifting, tennis, and after high school, I plan on majoring in nursing and then proceeding to go into, into a career in anesthesia with FSU.
Thank you.
My name is Randalie Chakriya, I go by Randy and I am a representative of West Florida High School. I am senior class president for my, uh, school's SGA as well as National Honor Society President and I'm also involved in Key Club, track and field, and weightlifting and then I plan to study biochemistry at, um, a university. I haven't, uh, kinda decided which university yet, but in hope to become a trauma surgeon.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Natalie George, I'm a senior at Tate High School. I am involved in FBLA, Beta Club, Mu Alpha Theta, English Honor Society, and the president of student council and volleyball and flag football. And after high school, I plan to go to college and pursue a degree, um, in dermatology.
How you guys doing?
Uh, my name's Aiden Bramlett, I'm a junior at Tate High School, uh, play baseball there, I'm on the junior advisory board there. Um, after high school, I was, uh, hoping to play baseball, but, um, you know, college is also an option. Um, where I would really like to be an athletic trainer if baseball doesn't work out. So, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Alexandria, I go to Escambia High School, um, I'm a senior. I'm the president of First Priority SGA, I'm in senior council and today, I actually just joined, um, Chain Reaction. After high school, I plan to go to PSC. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peyton Sims, I go to Escambia High School. I'm a senior, I'm a part of senior council, I'm the vice president, I'm a part of student government. I've been on the varsity cheer team for four years, I'm a part of Beta Club and I plan to attend Troy University next year to be an elementary teacher.
Hello, I'm Weston Reimer, I'm a senior at Washington High School. I play soccer there, I played football there, um, that's about it. And then, uh, uh, after high school, I wanna go to the University of Florida to major in chemistry and then later go on to dental school.
Thank you, Mr. Reimer. Did you have any questions you might wanna ask?
No, I just wanna say thank you for your leadership at each one of your respective schools and being the example that you're setting for many other students in our school system and thank you for coming out today and thank you for the superintendent for inviting you here, so keep up the great work, keep up the leadership and really appreciate you.
Now, Randy, if they end up with any questions, since you're the more experienced one, we'll get you to answer them, okay? Alright.
Um, I'm Paul Fetzko, I'm on the school board from District Two, which is Escambia, uh, but what I wanna say is I wanna thank you for taking the time to be involved and to do this service, to meet with the superintendent and to be representatives from your schools. Um, I think what you're doing is extremely valuable to the school district, uh, I think it is great that you represent and represent so well. You're all very motivated and you achieve and you're focused and that's very good and and I'm proud of all of you for doing that and I thank you for the time. A couple comments I could make, but my sense of humor is something not everyone has to deal with, it's an acquired thing, but, uh...
You don't acquire it.
But, but Peyton, I, I'll be watching, your grandma keeps me involved and, and I'm, I know what's going on. Um, but what I do wanna say is this, we, most of us just returned from the Florida School Boards Association Winter Conference and as part of that conference the last two times, they've had students mainly from central Florida because that's located in Tampa, students who've come and they've talked about topics relevant to the students. And one of the big things that was said this time was that, uh, they, the students who were on that panel, there were four of them, and they really felt there was a great need for more mental health services to students in school. A goodly number of them didn't feel safe anywhere at school or in the community or what have you and, and I don't know if it's a sign of the times or what have you, but one of the things they brought up, they said that, um, most of them were not, most students were not aware of what mental health services were available in the schools and they didn't know how to get advertisement out to students so they could access those services. And I guess as a follow-up, I, I wrote it down 'cause I wanted to talk with Dr. Joyner here today, um, but, uh, I wanted to talk to, uh, to you all and ask you, this is most fortuitous, do you all feel that we have a similar situation in Escambia County? In, in your respective schools, do you know what services are available and how students would access and do you think all of your fellow students also know that and what ideas might you have for advertising those services?
Randy, come on.
Like three or four quarters.
And I'd know Mr. Bramlett could tell us what he feels as well, so come on up, Bramlett.
Um, more specific towards West Florida High School, um, my school does a really good job of, you know, really putting out on those resources for mental illness, especially through the videos that our school does require, um, all students kinda get out into and then, uh, we have TVs all throughout the school that has those like resources implemented on there and we do have a, uh, mental health, uh, mental health counselor there who, you know, really tries her best to kinda outreach to the students and really be there as somebody that they can support. Um, I have heard a little bit amongst other schools about mental health being a little touching, I'm sorry, a little touch and go for them, so I'm pretty sure we might, it might not be as big of an issue as it is in central Florida, but it probably is something that we can work on putting more so out to make sure all schools really have those resources available. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Aiden?
So, I'll be honest, I don't know if we have an on, in, in-school therapist, I believe that we do, um, I know that we have one for, uh, students, uh, for military students, I know that we have a military counselor, um, but we, Tate specifically, 'cause I, I can't speak for other schools, um, we don't really have, I mean, obviously, we have guidance counselors and there are some students who are really good at communicating with their guidance counselors. I have friends who email them every week, I have some friends who email them every day, I have some friends who don't email them at all. Me personally, I didn't know who my guidance counselor was until my sophomore year. Um, I think it, it had either changed or, um, I hadn't met with her my freshman year and then this year, she left schools in the middle of the school, or like at the beginning of the school year without really any warning. Um, honestly, Natalie is probably a better, um, viewpoint to get for this because she's been here longer than I have, uh, obviously, she's involved in a lot more than I am, so she would have that, um, experience with having to communicate with these people, but as a general person, um, who is kinda just, I don't know where I was going with that.
You're just, you're not shy is the reason I asked for you.
Uh, as, as somebody who typically does not talk to their guidance counselor, a- as I would consider myself an average student in that, um, experience, um, I don't really know who all of them are, I don't really have a relationship with any of them and I believe that it would be, uh, very beneficial for them to meet with us more, get more involved in our, uh, student lives and our, maybe even in our personal lives, um, but yeah, I think that's all.
Thank you, Aiden.
Yes, sir, thank you.
What you just witnessed, um, was, you know, two different students with two different perspectives, but the truth, and that's what's been enlightening for me, just in the few instances I've been able to have the opportunity to meet with this group, they tell you what they see from their perspective, um, and that is critical and I love that they're honest, I love that there's no, there's no filter 99% of the time, um, and we will try to set up a bowling, isn't that what you wanted me to do now, a chance to go bowling, we'll try to get, get out there. They are going to help us with, um, getting out the message of the vape usage and, um, actually, they have, and I've talked to y'all about this before, they want us to start off at the middle school level and then they'll hear this, the actual date for the Unplugged Day. There's what's called an International Unplugged Day that I had no idea existed. It is March the 7th, so the next time we get together in late January, early February, we'll begin to get that word out and get you to help us with that, so thank you for that question, Mr. Fetzko.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I just wanna thank the superintendent for creating this group and I wanna thank you for volunteering to be on that committee. I, I've done a lot of volunteering in my life myself, uh, I can remember being in Key Club over there at Escambia High School, that was many decades ago, but we had a Key Club and we had a Sam Spring, y'all probably still got that, but, uh, but anyway, congratulations, y'all gonna go far, uh, as involved you are with your school and the community, so congratulations to each and one, each and every one of you.
Mr. Harold?
I'd like to thank you for being here today and thank the superintendent for inviting you and I'd also like to commend you for, I, I noticed that every one of you were involved in clubs and various activities. That's a good indicator of success in life and it's a good way to, to move to the next level, you know, life is a series of steps and you're, you're climbing that ladder and by joining all those organizations and so forth, uh, it gives you a wealth of knowledge that will help you at the next level, so I encourage you to continue to do that and thank you for being here today.
And just before we move on, we do have Ms. Burgash who's, um, online. Ms. Burgash, you have anything you'd like to add?
Hi, Mr. Williams, thank you for including me, yes, I would like to say thank you so much to the students and the superintendent's council for being here today, I says your support of public education and I wanted to thank you for your dedication and helping not only yourself, but also your fellow students and your fellow staff and teachers to work together to help improve the education. I wanna commend you for your participation and encourage you to continue to do that, okay? Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Superintendent?
I, I know there's at least one parent here, is it, if you, if you're a parent of one of these students, will you please stand so we can recognize you and what you're doing? And Ms. Canales? Ms. Canales is here from PHS. Thank you, very, very proud of you. You, you're certainly welcome to stay or you may leave, whatever you wish.
And again, thank you for coming out, thank you. And also, just wanna make sure that the board knows that we have a time certain item at 1:30, so we might be involved in something, uh, or discussion, we may have to stop for the time certain item that, that is on our agenda, but next up is the calendar, if everyone, school board members, you take out your calendar, let's go over the month of December, which is, um, vastly closing. We have the board meeting on the 17th, uh, the Hall Center Luncheon is on the 19th, I hope everyone can attend on that, the winter break starts on the 23rd with the employees returning on January the 6th. There's a poverty simulation training on the 6th, I believe it, Mr. Fetzko, you'll sign up for that? And Mr. Adams, you have your planning board on the, on the 7th and Count on Business Luncheon is also on the 7th, there's an Escambia delegation on the 8th. I'm not sure if anyone's committed to that, I've, I've been invited, but I do wanna speak to legal counsel about that before I go. Children Trust on the 14th, uh, meeting with the superintendent, that's myself, on the 15th and then the discussion board on, uh, the agenda's on the 16th of January with our regular board meeting on the 21st. There's a governmental prayer breakfast on the 25th at Olive Baptist Church at 7 o'clock AM and are there anything else for the, for the calendar for the month of December and January? I, I was gonna speak to counsel before I committed, but were you, were you gonna go, Ms. Adams?
I don't know. I usually go every year, you know, yeah. But, I'll debate.
Mr. Williams, I do plan on attending and is to make the same request that we made last year, is for the delegation to look in, placing in legislation and in law, um, a provision that would treat, uh, shooting on a school campus near and or about, um, the location of a school campus, uh, an arrest that would not allow immediate release from jail.
Okay.
Which we've seen occur.
Okay, I appreciate it. Well, we may just let you represent Escambia County at that meeting now.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for the calendar? And it, also just wanna inform the board, there's been a request, uh, to move up the April workshop, to move the April workshop back 30 minutes, uh, starting time to 1:30 so that we may be able to participate in the Career Academy Awards Luncheon. Are there any objections to that, moving it back 30 minutes, starting at 1:30?
Through the hotel?
I believe it is. Uh, where is it located, Mr. Harold?
I'm nervous to say where it's located, uh, on, on the mic because it's an invitation-only event, but it, it's at the Hilton Garden Inn, so you'll, you'll have time, uh, to get back here. The 30 minutes would make it a perfect end and transition time because it will end at 1 for that event, that'll give us 30 minutes to get back over here.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you for the information. Next item up is the public forum update, Mr. Superintendent.
No, sir.
Okay, nothing. Now, we'll go to the board committee, uh, commitments, um, we have a list of, and it's almost 1:30, so we'll stop at 1:30, uh, but we'll go ahead and start. We have, uh, committees that the school board members participate on, myself is the Community Action Program, I would like to stay on that as well and also the Children Trust is another one that I'm a part of. Uh, there's the Escambia County Planning Board, Mr. Adams, are you still willing to serve on that? And Mr. Adams is also serving on the Escambia County Value Adjustment Board, okay, you wanna stay on those two boards? Okay. Mr. Fetzko, you're on the Early Learning Coalition?
Yes, sir.
And the Joint Council of Education Excellence, okay?
Yes, sir, I, I am on both of those and, uh, I would like to stay on both of those, but, uh, at, at the same time, if there's somebody who wanted to join me on either of those, I know that, uh, especially on the Joint Council, that, uh, Mrs. Burgash has attended as a, an employee of the, of NAS and now she can, we both can attend, it, but ooh, would that cause a problem with advertising?
I would say if you guys are going to do that, that you never attend at the same time. You could, you could, you could set up something where one of you is the primary and one serves as the alternate, uh, but I would, I would advise if you not both attend at the same time.
I would gladly serve as the alternate, Paul.
Okay, if I can't be there, then I'll let you know, Ms. Burgash, okay?
That's fine, yes, sir.
And Ms. Burgash, if you wouldn't mind, I would like for you to serve on the Military Affairs Committee as well.
Yes, I would do that.
And that leaves Mr. Harold, Escambia County Public Schools Foundation, if you would be willing to serve on that, that committee.
Yes, I'd be glad to.
I saw your support of public education, and I wanted to thank you for your dedication in helping not only yourself, but also your fellow students and your fellow staff and teachers to work together to help improve the education. I want to commend you for your participation and encourage you to continue to do that, okay? Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Superintendent?
I know there's at least one parent here. If you're a parent of one of these students, will you please stand so we can recognize you and what you're doing? And Ms. Canales, Ms. Canales is here from PHS. Thank you. Very, very proud of you. You're certainly welcome to stay, or you may leave, whatever you wish.
And again, thank you for coming out. Thank you. And also just want to make sure that the board knows that we have a time certain item at 1:30. So we might be involved in something, our discussion, we may have to stop for the time certain item that is on our agenda. But next up is the calendar. If everyone, school board members, you take out your calendar, let's go over the month of December, which is vastly closing. We have the board meeting on the 17th. The Hall Center Luncheon is on the 19th. I hope everyone can attend on that. The winter break starts on the 23rd with the employees returning on January the 6th. There's a poverty simulation training on the 6th. I believe that Mr. Fesco, you'll sign up for that? And Mr. Adams, you have your planning board on the 7th. And Count on Business Luncheon is also on the 7th. There's an Escambia delegation on the 8th. I'm not sure if anyone's committed to that. I've been invited, but I do want to speak to legal counsel about that before I go. Children Trust on the 14th, meeting with the superintendent, that's myself, on the 15th. And then the discussion board on, the agenda's on the 16th of January with our regular board meeting on the 21st. There's a governmental prayer breakfast on the 25th at Olive Baptist Church at 7 o'clock a.m. And are there anything else for the calendar for the month of December and January? I was gonna speak to counsel before I committed. But were you gonna go, Ms. Adams?
I don't know. I usually go every year.
Okay.
Mr. Williams, I do plan on attending, and it's to make the same request that we made last year. It's for the delegation to look in, placing in legislation and in law a provision that would treat shooting on a school campus near and/or about the location of a school campus, an arrest that would not allow immediate release from jail.
Okay.
Which we've seen occur.
Okay, I appreciate it. Well, we may just let you represent a Escambia County at that meeting now.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for the calendar? And also just want to inform the board, there has been a request to move up the April workshop, to move the April workshop back 30 minutes, starting time to 1:30, so that we may be able to participate in the Career Academy Awards Luncheon. Are there any objections to that, moving it back 30 minutes, starting at 1:30?
Through the hotel?
I believe it is. Where is it located, Mr. Harrow?
I'm nervous to say where it's located on the mic because it's an invitation-only event, but it's at the Hilton Garden Inn, so you'll have time to get back here. The 30 minutes would make it a perfect end and transition time because it will end at 1 for that event. Now you give us 30 minutes to get back over here.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you for the information. Next item up is the Public Forum Update, Mr. Superintendent.
No, sir.
Okay, nothing. Now we'll go to the Board Committee, Commitments. We have a list of... And it's almost 1:30, so we'll stop at 1:30, but we'll go ahead and start. We have committees that the school board members participate on. Myself is the Community Action Program. I would like to stay on that as well. And also the Children Trust is another one that I'm a part of. There's the Escambia County Planning Board. Mr. Adams, are you still willing to serve on that? And Mr. Adams is also serving on the Escambia County Value Adjustment Board. Okay, you want to stay on those two boards? Okay. Mr. Fesco, you're on the Early Learning Coalition. And the Joint Council of Education Excellence. Okay.
Yes, sir. I am on both of those, and I would like to stay on both of those. But at the same time, if there's somebody who wanted to join me on either of those, I know that especially on the Joint Council, that Mrs. Burgos has attended as an employee of NAS. And now she can, we both can attend, but would that cause a problem with advertising?
I would say if you guys are going to do that, that you never attend at the same time. You could set up something where one of you is the primary and one serves as the alternate. But I would advise if you not both attend at the same time.
I would gladly serve as the alternate, Paul.
Okay, if I can't be there, then I'll let you know, Ms. Burgos, okay?
That's fine, yes, sir.
And Ms. Burgos, if you wouldn't mind, I would like for you to serve on the Military Affairs Committee as well.
Yes, I would do that.
And that leaves Mr. Harrow, Escambia County Public Schools Foundation, if you would be willing to serve on that committee.
Yes, I'd be glad to.
Any further, I think we...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Usually the board member that's not here gets all the committees.
I would miss Adams.
We appreciate that. We do have the FSBA Winter Conference Recap, but we're really close to time. Certainly only have about two or three minutes. So if you wouldn't mind, we can, General Counsel, can we recess for three minutes and come back at 1:30 to do the time certain item? Okay, well, we're gonna take a three-minute recess here. We'll give the members a chance to get back on the dials. The time certain item is the Charter School Quarter Report, and we have to report at 1:30 p.m. Is anyone here to give a report on the Charter School Quarter Report?
I know Mrs. Coots has provided you with the information. There's no principal from a charter school or board member from a charter school present today. So if you have questions, we'll get Miss Coots to come up, but if you're not, we can move to the next meeting, go back to the other meeting.
Any questions on the quarter report from the school board?
No questions.
Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is the FSBA Winter Conference Recap. And I would like to start out by saying it was one of the best conferences that I have attended since being on the school board. And just to remind everyone that the mission of the FSBA is to increase student achievement through the development of effective school board leadership and advocacy for public education. Association members convened, will convene again in March for the 38th Annual Day of Legislature in Tallahassee, of which I will be attending. The Florida School Board Association FSBA successfully concluded its FSBADSS 79th Annual Joint Conference, held December 3rd through the 6th. The event brought together over 425 school board members, superintendents, and educational leaders from across the state for a four-day collaboration of learning, inspiration, under the theme of game changers. The conference, and I really like this, the conference kicked off with an inspiring keynote from Damon West, a Wall Street Journal bestseller author and motivational speaker. His transformative BA Coffee Bean message encouraged attendees to harness their inner strength and to overcome challenges and create meaningful change in their schools and communities. On day two, Renee Coran, former NFL linebacker and leadership coach, developed a keynote address, "One Team, One Dream." His session provided accountable, actionable strategies, building teamwork, fostering leadership, and driving success in education, leaving all the attendees motivated and equipped to enhance their school board efforts. The conference also featured engaging breakout sessions that addressed key issues from around the state, such as school safety, legislative updates, family engagement, and leadership and best practices. And as always, and as Mr. Fesco mentioned earlier, there was a student panel, which we got a lot of insight to how students viewed the school system in which they lived in and go to school in. One of the sessions I would just like to highlight before I move on to the other board members, I attended one that was Strategies and Policies: Consideration for Improving Student Attendance in Florida Schools. Everyone is having that problem across the state. The company that presented this workshop was Attendance Works, and you can find them at www.attendanceswork.org. Doesn't cost anything for the information to go on there and look at it. They address daily attendance, truancy, chronical absence. And they presented the factors that impact students' attendance. There were barriers of chronic and acute illness that they addressed. Transportation issue, housing and food insecurity was a barrier. There were some aversion factors. Students were struggling academically and behaviorally. And also they said students, some students felt unwelcome, had an unwelcoming school climate, as well as social and peer challenges and anxiety, something that I think we have dealt with here as well. Another factor for student attendance was disengagement. There was no meaningful relationship that these students have with adults in school. And then they also addressed the misconceptions of some of the attendance problems. That attendance only matters in the older grades, which we know is not true. And also missing two days per month does not affect learning. That is not true as well. We had a chance to meet with some of the sponsors of FSBA. One that I'm really impressed with is the Kelly Educational Services of Staffing, which helps students, I mean counties and school boards nationwide to deal with substitute teachers and teacher shortage. And also the, how you say, Centa, Centa, thank you, School Security, which we have here in our county was able to speak with them as well. And also to talk some to some of our partners, Board Docs, and also Neola. So it was a very enlightening conference. We had a great time, learned a lot, and we'll energize to come back. I will open it up now to other board members to talk about the conference.
All right, I'll jump in because I was selected or appointed as the advocacy person from our district. I went on Tuesday, a day earlier than the actual formal beginning of the conference, to attend the Advocacy Committee Meeting. The big takeaway from that, to let everyone know, especially other board members, is the Advocacy Committee has a subcommittee that's gonna meet, and their major focus for this school year is to develop by the early part of January, an advocacy calendar where it would highlight one practice each month for board members throughout the state to go and advocate in their home communities, to churches, businesses, rotary clubs, so on and so forth. And those activities are gonna be suggestions that we all, as our requirement for being on the school board in the state of Florida, is to advocate for public education. This will be an opportunity for us to go forward and to have an objective for that advocacy each month through this next coming calendar year. So when that comes out, either I or Ms. Buswell, we'll get that information and we'll make it available to everyone else.
Ms. Burgos or Mr. Harrow?
I'll go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll go. I'm sorry. I hope I can do this without coughing a lot. But I think my, I had a lot of guideers there, but I think the most important one I received, and it was not education-related, but Ms. Patty Heitauer, I know you're probably watching, you are a rock star in FSBA. Everybody I ran across and met, they said, "Oh, you're from that county with Patty Heitauer as your school board member." So I have big shoes to fill, Patty. But also another thing I would like to say, FSBA, great organization. They gave us a lot of, lot of information, which can be overwhelming, but throughout the whole event, I realized that as a new school board member, I have a lot of support and a lot of advocacy on my side. And I want to thank you for that. Thank you for the opportunity to gather with my peers and gather more information. As I said, my first day of the new school board member introduction, it was like drinking water through a fire hose. There was a lot of information, but they said just take one day at a time. So great information, but just wanted to say thanks for that opportunity. And I think I caught this nasty cold from that, too. Thank you. Bye.
The conference was excellent. Both Ms. Burgos and myself, we attended the newbie section for new board members. And they concentrated a lot on First Amendments, who's the boss in the system, you know, things like this, and sunshine laws. We learned right up front that board members govern, the superintendent's administer, and you stay in your lane. That was one of the things consistently for new board members, and I really appreciate that. I learned a lot. I really, and Mr. Williams was at the chairman portion of this, and Mr. Williams, when many times we would join together with the new board members, and I got to hear a lot of the things, he was mentioned earlier, a lot of the same workshops there we were in. It was very good. For a new board member, Carissa's right, it's overwhelming, you know? And you've got so much on your plate to begin with, and you certainly don't want to make a mistake. So this conference helped a lot. It gives you a foundation. It gives you a place to start, you know, as a new board member. And it gives you a comfort level also, you know, which is very important. It's, any one that takes on an elected position needs to support, a partner, a peer, you know? And this organization certainly gives you that opportunity to do that. I'd like to bring up something else, Mr. Williams, if you'd let me.
Yes, sir.
If everyone is through speaking on that, there's a, the finance training is coming up on February the 6th and 7th, and it's in Gainesville. And then the second half of that is coming up April 24th and 25th. And that's a requirement for board certification, and it's not gonna be offered again for two years. And so I was kinda reluctant to sign up for that, but I think it would be important for the new board members to attend it. I think, Paul, you have already attended that, am I correct? And I'm sure you have as well. The reason I bring that up, when the package was approved for the conference before, this was not approved. So this would be something that would have to come to the January board meeting, okay? So just making the board members aware. And if Ms. Burgos, I'm certainly, I'm certainly gonna sign up, I think. So that would be something that would have to get board approval then.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if Ms. Burgos wants to also, if she's still on the line here, you know?
I am so, I was hesitant because the timing, February travel, and then March travel in Tallahassee, and then again in April, so that's a lot of traveling out of town. So I didn't know if that's something we want to look at. But I've heard some wonderful things, wonderful things about financial training.
The concern I had was this training's not gonna be offered for two more years. And it's the limited space this time of 65, if I remember from the memo, if that's... So if we miss it this time, then that will put us off, that's required training to be certified board member. If we're interested in being a certified board member, then we have to, then we just have to go to this. If not, then it'll be two more years before we get the opportunity to get that training. If I'm reading the memo correctly.
You're correct, but we have an expert here, an Assistant Superintendent of Finance, who probably could train you just as well as those people at that conference. But it was valuable for me to see how FTE has counted and all of the other budgets that every county in Florida has to deal with. So it's a valuable training.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna think about it another day or two, but right now I'm leaning towards going to that.
And it does fill up fast, I think. It does fill up fast, so don't wait too long on that.
Just wanted to point that out, yeah.
And I also want to say this before we move on to the next item. I did not know how many people watch our board meetings from across the state. And so therefore, I'm gonna be very careful in things that I say for now at the board meetings. Because there's general counsel from all across the state of Florida that watch our board meetings. And had a lot of comments on that when we were there. So, but people are watching us, and so evidently we must be an example for many other boards across the state. So knowing that we, people are interested in what's going on in Escambia County. Yes, sir.
One more thing about the conference. We had 63 new board members in the state of Florida, and we had 59 of the 63 there at the conference. And that's remarkable for our state, you know, having that many new board members and how many were there from that. So 59 of 63, I thought was real good.
Yes. If there's no more other comments, we'll move on to the next item. Mr. Fesco, Master Board Training.
It really ties into what we've been talking about. Several years ago, the board went through master board training. And that involves all the school board members and the superintendent going through training that the Florida School Boards Association puts on. And what it does, it helps everyone to understand their roles. But it goes into styles, and it goes into preferences on how people communicate and what their priorities are and things like that. It was a very insightful and it was a very needed training when we went through it. Since that time, we've trained, changed superintendents. At that first one that was Mr. Thomas was still in, and we've changed board members. And so I would like to suggest that we go through it again. I know that the FSBA has been contacted via Ms. Buswell. I asked her, and she reached out. And they do have times available, but the commitment is for all of us to be a part of that training and take that time, superintendent and the entire board. The money isn't gonna, the money isn't gonna change, sir.
I don't want to talk about personal reasons I have.
Right, I'm not, I'm just saying, the cost is...
I'm gonna support y'all for what y'all wanna do at FSBA, and I'm happy with where I am right now.
Well, this isn't for the FSBA. This is for Escambia County School Board.
Well, I think, I don't, if you ask me, is it worth it? I don't believe so. So I'm a different person than what you are now.
Okay. And that's right, that's fine, sir. The invitation is extended, and it's still there, and it won't change anything with cost or anything. But if the majority of board members and the superintendent are in favor of going through the training, I'd...
Mr. Fesco, I, Ms. Burgos, I wanted to ask, training virtually, or do they come to Pensacola, or do we have to travel?
No, they come to Pensacola. The last time it was in the superintendent's conference room. And I would suggest that we do that again as a location to do that. It would be, I think it's two or three different sessions. But they take it and they move it so that it's not all in one, one big gulp. It would be sectioned off into a couple of days, and it would be broken up within a month or two months or three months, however it works best for us and our calendars.
Okay, good. Thank you. I, I still want to ask the district extra money to travel. So I'm glad here it's done here in Pensacola, local. Thank you.
Um, there's training hours that, uh, uh, Ms. Buswell has put up. It's a total of twenty points, uh, towards, uh, I guess towards a certified board member status. Um, all the training is on site. Um, there is, uh, total of twenty hours and it looks like it's spread over four different days. So, uh, and those days can be staggered however we want them to be and however their calendars. Because they get filled up with people throughout the state trying to go through it. I, I said that the first time that I went through it, well, the only time I went through it, uh, again, there were new board members involved. And it helped tremendously in, uh, being able to understand somebody's point of view and how to communicate best with other people and how styles of communication are different between and among us. And, and so, um, the insights from that training was very worthwhile to me.
Paul, quick question. Uh, how, uh, how much does that cost the district for that?
Um, it's been, the price has been negotiated or not negotiated, has been set, um, know that we had it.
I think it's forty-eight hundred dollars. Does it sound right, Elizabeth?
Okay. And that's based upon the size of the district and, you know, the amount of time, but that brings, they need, normally bring two, sometimes three trainers in to each session. But they bring, they come in to us and, you know, it, it's here locally.
Another question. Does it, uh, if, if at least three members of the board, then did that make the whole board mem, uh, the whole board a, uh, a certified board then? If there's three, how does that work, Paul?
Uh, that I can't answer off the top of my head, but I can find out what, what'll happen. So if, uh, four of us and the superintendent go through, I don't know whether we'd get the status or with a, it's a master board to, to all of us to be involved. But I'll ask that question and get, bring it back to our next meeting. Um, maybe for Tuesday, actually. I'll try to get in touch with Andrew Messina, uh, or Ms. Buswell, if you can reach out to somebody and get us that information for Tuesday evening.
One of the, one of the concerns I have is that, uh, we're already doing so much training for the, of newbies. And I'm, and I'm not speaking for Carissa. I'm, I'm just saying that that's, there's a lot of training out there and somewhere along the line, you have to, you have to kind of level it out, you know, it's just.
And if we want, as, as a, a group, if it's more desirable to wait till a later date, I'm okay with that. I, I just, uh, I, I just know that it was a very valuable training to me. And it typically is a very good thing to, to develop bonds and understandings within the board locally. This is not about anything statewide or any state organization. It's about how we as a board function, communicate and work together.
I would encourage all of our members to, to be a part of it. I think it's worthwhile and it only can strengthen us as a board. Um, and also project us to where we want to go in Escambia County. So I'm, I'm all in, Mr. Fesco. So whenever you, uh, find out the information, I'm, I'm very interested in moving forward with that.
All right. Well, we'll try to get that information for Tuesday evening and then present it then and, 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 you know, at that time decide, we want to do it now, we want to do it later, you know, whichever. And, and I do understand, Mr. Harrow, that there is a lot that goes on, especially with the trainings that you all were, are set up with at this point. So we could delay till summer or fall or what have you. But, um, in the long run, it would, would serve us well.
When you look, Paul, when you look at this training schedule on the back here of the, it's extensive.
Been, been there, Tom. Been there.
The first, I know, the first, the first year, that's, that's quite a bit. And I'm, as I said earlier, I'm concerned about a new board member being out of the district more, you know? If you're a new board member and you're, you're three months in and then you are off and not here for a board meeting, I, I have, that's not a good image to project. And, at least that's the way I feel personally. Yeah.
Well, and, and again, I don't know what scheduling conflicts there would be, if there would be meetings have to be missed or whatever with those trainings.
Right.
With the, with the certi, the, the, uh, master board, uh, they, they work around our schedule. We work around theirs.
I realize that, yeah.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
I have an answer from Mr. Fesco.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
I'm, I'm looking at the FSBA website and it says to earn a master board distinction, a majority of the board members and the superintendent must be present at the following sessions. And then it has those listed. So it does appear that it ju, it does not have to be a hundred percent of the board, as long as it's a majority of the board. And it does also appear that there is a, um, an intent to participate agreement. So that may be something that needs to be put on the agenda to demonstrate that a majority of the board is interested in participating.
Okay. So the majority of the board could be three?
Absolutely.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This conversation brought me back to something. On that legislative night at Penn School State College Theater out there, normally it'd be Paul now as a, as a advocacy for this board legislative representative, you would go speak. So when I got thinking about it, that's where I went, you know, every time I spoke to him. I was speaking on, if you remember, uh, we even did our own platform.
Right.
Which that probably needs to be done quickly, you know, and, uh, I'm sure y'all have already got something probably. Each one of us can name off an issue, you know, that, that are put on there, but, uh, use it a board to vote and prove their own little platform. That when we went down to Tallahassee, you people show your FSBA, but you could also show your Escambia County. You know, because every, every district will have their own different priorities. So that's what I would suggest, Paul, is that you, uh, sign up to go speak to the legislative group and, uh, hopefully, uh, when is that, uh, legislative, uh? Coming up pretty quick, isn't it? Or what? Huh? January eighth. So, um, it'd have to be a quickie.
Do we have a, an organization, a lobbyist or someone that presents for us at the dis, I thought, I saw that we did, you know?
Well, we, we have a lobbyist and stuff, but they.
No, but this is just, I know the local delegation, but usually if you hire someone and they have, they're there also. Is that not correct? Yeah? That, or is this just a time for local or?
Not this, not this, not at this type situation. Okay?
Okay.
So it, I always went with Malcolm. Malcolm would do his little talk. I'd do my little talk, you know, as a legislative guy for FSBA. And, um, and it could be two different, a lot of times he tried to emphasize we would meet before the meeting and he would say, hey, I'm going to take these, right here, you, you take these and run with it. And we would partner up that way. So, uh, the same thing could be done. So.
And is this something that's televised?
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Any more, any more discussion on that?
So if, when Paul sends his email and the superintendent sends his email, they have forms they have to complete. And then they'll send it in to them. And it's, that's where y'all, where you're going to speak in that meeting. So you hope to be at the top of it and then down at the bottom.
Well.
Been there a long time.
Like to ask my fellow board members to do then is to, uh, send to Ms. Buswell before January.
Yeah.
Oh, before the sixth. Well, actually, if possible, before we close for Christmas, to send what you would think it would be a, uh, legislative, uh, request that we would make from the county.
December twenty-seventh. You have to, at the RSCP by December twenty-seventh.
And do we have to give him the topics?
Yeah.
Okay.
You just put, you just put legislative.
So you request an appearance form.
Put legislative items on the form.
Right. And, and so I would make that request, but so that each board member has input to say these are the, the areas that we have concern about and we'd like our delegation to work on. Um, that we could talk about it right now, you know?
Right. You know, uh, one item that we've always been looking at was the, um, tiebacks. You know, where we have children that go to Achieve or Success Academy. Uh, that one, it, it would seem like that'd be an easy one to get something done on. Cause every time I talked to a representative down in Tallahassee, they, they, they think it's kind of crazy. You know, a kid cannot, could put a school into a D or F and never attend that school. Cause he's zoned to that school. So, um, imagine we could dust off what we had the last time we actually put one together. And, uh, I guess, did we do it when Tim Smith was here? I think we did, right? Yeah, I think we had it. I think we voted on one. So if, if Elizabeth can find that platform that we had from the prior, probably a lot of it's same stuff you worried about this time and with the superintendent too. Yeah. So. I would definitely get out there and talk about it a little bit.
I can, I, I mean, I know exactly what I talked about last year. Um. And Mr. Fesco and, Mr. Fesco could be the one that signs up.
Go ahead.
I'm fine with just him delivering that message. What I have found is, this is on a personal note, not anything necessary professionally. I'm better off to talk to Ms. Salzman, Mr. Andrade and now Mr. Gates, just like we're talking today. And I'm better off if I can do that face to face. Um, these delegation meetings, I mean, last year, where was, was it Perdido Key that was trying to go to be its own city?
Uh, to the city, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's what took up, like you said, an hour and a half of that meeting. And I think I ended up with like thirty seconds to speak.
I definitely think it's worth at least, uh, get some airtime on the issues that Escambia County has where the public is live streamed. They could see it, but that's just my opinion. But, uh, I will work in the shadows like I usually do, so, on these issues.
Right. So the academic tiebacks would be one. Anything else off that, uh, anyone has? I, I did attend the, the one session that talked about, uh, the upcoming legislative initiatives that, that, uh, the FSBA advocate, uh, Dr. Danielle Thomas, uh, said that, she said that safety, there would be things with safety.
I would get Mrs. Colo to, or Dr. Colo to provide you some information that we need to get through as it relates to, uh, this is, well, I, I think this was what she would want as it relates to pre-K and then the summer bridge program. One's a three-hundred-hour requirement. Then you turn right back around. You have to do a one-hundred-hour requirement. Uh, and I think that, the bridge program, I think is half-day. It makes absolutely, it does not make sense because they make you go for about nine and a half hours, one part of the summer to get three hundred, nine and a half hours a day to get three hundred hours in June. And in July, you gotta get a hundred hours and they make you go a half a day. I mean, I don't understand it. That, am I right, Dr. Colo? Or am I close? Okay. And Ms. Buswell, I will give you the information related to the one item that I would want to speak to and just let Mr. Fesco represent all of us, okay?
That's scary. You better rethink that, sir.
You have to redo that. You bow here real quick here.
So the summer bridge program is new coming up this, this summer in two thousand twenty-five. It is a hundred-hour program, which is fine. But the law stated that it had to be four hours a day. And our ask would be that there would not be that limitation because if we did not have that, we could run it concurrent with our regular summer camp, which is also a hundred hours, uh, uh, in total, but it, they allow a six-point-two-five hours per day and it ends in June. This means with a four-hour cap, we've got to run four hours a day for twenty-five days, which means if we were to provide transportation, we would have buses running in the afternoon at two different times, after the four-hour mark and then after the six-point-two-five hour mark, which means we would not offer transportation. So the hundred hours for summer bridge is fine, but when they put in the four hours per day max and limit, and I did reach out to DOE to see if that was, um, something that we had to adhere to or can we get a waiver? They said, no, it must be four hours exactly for the day. So now we're locked into that. The three-hundred-hour program is our typical summer VPK program, which runs for ten hours a day for thirty days. And so because we are closed on Fridays in the summertime, which is very beneficial, we run all the way up until the week before school starts back. It's very difficult to get teachers willing to work their entire summer. And we can't even, um, allow for a nap time with VPK at, in a ten-hour day because then that's not the ten hours of instruction. If they on their own take a mat and go lay down, we still have instruction going on. But it's just a very, very long day for children. Um, it's essentially the children who have been in the ESE program, who have not used their VPK voucher typically, we're happy to serve them. But the three-hour maximum cap and, and requirement is very difficult. And only the school district is required to provide that. The, the private providers in the community do not have to provide either one of those programs, only the school district. So those are some of the problems that we see in that.
Okay, Dr. Colo, before this happens, you and I will have a lot more talk so that I can say the right things. Um, the, the other thing that was said though is part of legislation is that there's going to, a move in the legislature to make, uh, VPK full-day programs statewide.
I had not heard that. They would have to probably put up a lot more money because right now, uh, the full-day program is only funded by about three hours of VPK funds. And then we use Title I funds for the remainder of the day. That's why we only have Title I pre-K in schools that have, are Title I schools.
Right. They, they did say that this is an initiative that is getting traction right now with bills that are, are being sent in. Uh, and they realize there's a funding situation with it, but they've also had some discussion with it. They being the legislative aides who are working on getting these bills submitted. And so, um, that will also be something, I think that we would be in favor of them funding full day. And that, that would take the funding from Title I that you're having to do and put it back in other places that you could allocate that money if the state stepped up and took care of pre-K.
Correct. However, our Title I grants due in April. So we have to know that pretty, they need to make that a priority early in the legislative session. Would be the ask if that happens because we would have submitted our grant allocating those funds to pre-K unnecessarily.
You can amend after that?
You can, but then you have to redo the school budgets because it's a lot of money to go back to the schools. They'd have to do a second round of budgeting. So.
I, I understand. I, I just know that.
It's doable, but it's not ideal.
But I also know that the legislature doesn't, uh, always consider that there may be other things or other people who, who will have a tremendous amount of work to do when they make it a change. But I think it would be a great change long-term in the future to, to set up pre-K statewide for full days.
Or, or if anticipated, perhaps DOE could give us a, a different due date for the Title I grant and make it back in June like they used to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair? I, I'd also be interested if Terry and Sean has anything in their shops that, you know, that they need some legislative help on. So, uh, if they'll let you know and you can afford it. I, I imagine all of us is going to be working on legislative issues. So when we get, we go in and talk, and, and Tom, when you go in those offices, you gotta have your thirty, thirty-second speech. That's about what you're going to get. So you, you just gotta go in there, hit your topics and then out to that office and head to the next one.
Good advice. Thank you.
Yeah. They don't want no five minutes.
But there was a thing, a talk, there was talk about legislative, um, things with the capital outlay, um, FTE and how to allocate capital outlay FTE. Something new that it's, it looks like the legislature may be taking some action with. That was just comments. I don't know any more about it, uh, than, than that was in the list of notes that I have here. Um, the, uh, last year, there was a big thing about the deregulation. And deregulation is no longer a term that is to be used. That the, it, it appears that from what was said by the lobbyists who presented, that, uh, the term now is administrative efficiency. So if we want to look at some administrative efficiencies, uh, we, we can also do that. So if there are some efficiencies that you're aware of, that you would like to see changed in legislation, that would be another area.
Any more discussion on that before we move to the next item? Next item we have is Mr. Adams in National Summit on Education Recap.
Uh, this I'm handing you. I, I had the ladies give me some extra ones. These are the ones we had around our necks. So it shows, uh, the agenda we had. And I was, this was putting this link up there. And on that link, and I'll have reported to you, but it actually has a keynote speakers on here. It shows their whole speech. Later on, they'll have every agenda item on there too. So you can go back to Atlanta on the same page you're showing up there. Um, you can go back to the Atlanta conference. You can go to all the prior ones. And they have wonderful speakers. I mean, it's, got some talent coming, coming into that, uh. Uh, this year I had Tim Bryant. Tim Bryant went. He's the chair of.
into that. Uh, this year, I had Tim Bryant, Tim Bryant went, he's the chair of FSBA, had a couple of other board members, so it was fun. I wasn't by myself this time, you know, so, but it's a kinda conference that when I, like when I go on the elevator, Bush got on with me, started talking to me about Northwest Florida politics, you know, and go out in lobby, Manny Diaz is there. So it's all the power people all across the country for their different educations. Huckabee's daughter is a guest speaker. But some of these guest speakers here, the keynote speakers, it's good for y'all to go in there and look at it. I mean, they did a wonderful, wonderful discussion, especially on this age inappropriate content these kids are getting from every different direction. So that was a priority again at that conference. Speaker Renner, I was in one of his sessions, he's an outgoing speaker, you know, he's turned them it out, but still pushing on the cell phone use and social media use and everything that's going on. The numbers are becoming atrocious, becoming very critical for these children, that, on these suicide rates, self harm, and mental health. It's just, it, it's, it's getting to be significant. Even though we got some forces that are trying to push this inappropriate content, these students, all the way up to the government, they're getting very concerned of what's going on because there's a reason why they shouldn't have inappropriate age content material. And, but anyway, I, I brought this book today, this is from Jonathan Hyatt. He has been a leader on this situation, and this book right here is The Great Rewiring of Childhood, Childhood Causing Epidemic of Mental Illness, okay? And I was gonna give it to Paul first to read it, and if you'll just pass along to the, to the other ones. But very good conference, lot of, lot of, lot of stuff in, in these sessions, and, and I kinda could see what's gonna be coming. Now, you know, we know now Australia has made it against the law for any child sixteen or below accessing. I think you're gonna see similar things on these state legislators that are gonna be pushing. Matter of fact, one of them told me, and I hope he, he said, we're gonna make this easy on you because it's gonna be us doing it instead of board members. And I just shook my head at that, you know, but, but it's, it's, it's a critical thing. These children are being presented with adult content that should not happen by people who are making money off them, whether it's books, songs, social media, you name it. They're making money on these kids, and it's making these kids pretty sick. So anyway, great conference. Next year, I'd be in New Orleans, so I'll probably get to ride that one. So, but we had a good time, me and Tim Bryant, we went to quite a few sessions together. So next year, if, if y'all can, please, please attend.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Adams, for the update. Next, we'll move on to the Karen McIntosh Plan Initiative, and that comes up under me. Back in November, we voted unanimously to support the Karen McIntosh Education Initiative. As all of you know, Karen McIntosh was an administrator and educator in our school system, passed away unexpectedly, and we started this initiative that would address certain components and starting in District Three and hopefully expanding to other schools in the county. There were five components to the Karen McIntosh Education Initiative: mentoring, parental involvement, absenteeism, conflict resolution, and career education. Have had a chance to visit with three of the schools in District Three, who, and those principals have agreed to work on maybe one or two of those initiatives in their school. Global Academy will work on absenteeism. CAY's will work on parental involvement in Markley Elementary, which will be the mentoring part of this Karen McIntosh Initiative. In January of two thousand twenty-five, we plan to kick off the Karen McIntosh Initiative with the assistance of Mr. Cody Strutters, who's helped with some signage, and also with the superintendent, we plan on rolling that out in January. Just wanted to give you an update on that, and I'm really looking forward to the Karen McIntosh Initiative, the pilot programs in these three schools, and, and having the data to come back to see how well we have done at the end of the year. Next, we're moving on to Item Three of the Agenda. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any additional comments?
Yes. Really, I have a request. In the regular agenda, you're gonna see where we are doing an item for first hearing to define a quorum when we're putting together our book review committees, which I think is really, really needed. You know, every once in a while, somebody gets sick and they end up, and it happens right on the day of the meeting, they can't be there, and we've had to cancel some of the book review committee meetings because of that. So make sure you knew that there, that is there, and it's on first reading. And with Mrs. Odom's guidance, we were able to say that fourteen days was unnecessary because it is just a procedural, it's, it's a procedural writing, adding a definition of one word into our rule. So that's why that's there. The other thing I wanted to request of you, this is really of Mrs. Burgash and of Mr. Harold, if you would like to give us some additional names on top of who Mrs. Hightower and Mr. Slaton had provided to us, that would be really good. You can keep the exact same people you already have and just give us additional names. And then if the other three board members could think of three, four, or five more committee members, the bigger the pool that we have to choose from, the better chance of being able to meet and meet continuously and have more meetings will, that will occur. The fewer members we have of each pool, we're limited to when we can meet because of their availability. I could let Mrs. Vincent tell you the number of times she's either tried to call, contact, and didn't get information back. I'm just telling you, we need a few more members if you could do that. If you'll provide those to Ms. Buswell, I'll walk down there, Ms. Harris will walk down, we'll get them from her. But that was to give our two, two new board members the opportunity, they wanted to add some people to their, their listing, and also a request of you three that you would give us a few more. So, thank you.
Sure. Well, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Leonard, I, I intend to keep all of the eleven on the committee that had been appointed by Mr. Slaton. They came directly from principals in District Five, and it's my intention as soon as I can get up with the principals to get them to recommend more for that committee.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hopefully more than five, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Who did you need?
I couldn't hear you, Ms. Burgash. What did you say?
Hi, Mr. Leonard, how many names you need?
Um, if you could get somewhere between three and five additional members, that would be very helpful, Ms. Burgash.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments on that? This brings us to our agenda review. Mr. Superintendent, are there any additions or deletions for this month's agenda?
Yes, sir. And in fact, one just got added, so I'll, I'll be a little bit out of order. I believe it is in elementary ed, which is under the curriculum, which is section, is it ten? Number ten. Item, I don't know, what letter out, item is it? Anyway, it's been added.
Okay.
That is the MOU with United Way. It's part of the Children's Trust Initiative at Global and Sims. So that's been added. But the regular listing is under Section Six. The one I just spoke to, spoke to you about, is the first reading on revisions of school district rules. Under Section Nineteen, consent curriculum, we have deleted items A, B, and C. Those are the academic calendars. We'll be bringing those back next month. We really do appreciate our board members and our district staff that review, review things and then see that we do need to pull back and get, bring it back the next month. So that's what happened there, and that's a good thing. Under Section Twenty, finance, Items B and Items, Item B and C have been added. That's the financial statements by fund and financial statements report by employee benefit. And then I think added today was under Section Twenty-two, consent, finance, budgeting. Is that what it was, Terry? Budget amendment. So those are, those are all the items for now.
Thank you. Mr. Harold, is your month to bring the implication and also the pledge, just remind you of that. Okay. We're moving on to the minutes for November. Any discussion for the month?
I'm, I'm gonna jump back to something because I saw Ms. Buswell's reaction. There was an ad under the evaluation superintendent, forty-three A, says ad.
There's an item that's been added.
From the board.
Under Section Forty-two, Forty-two A.
Forty-three A.
Forty, yes, sir, it's there. I missed that one, that's my fault.
It was a board item, so it's okay, sir.
It was his evaluation. He might have skipped it on purpose, so.
He'll be well.
Move on. Move on. No unfinished business. We go to Item Number Five, which is administrative appointments. We will move this, this time up on Tuesday evening. Just let them know we'll move it up.
Sir?
Yes.
I thought, yeah, I'm fine if you'll move it up.
Yeah, we wanna move it up. The next item, we have one item for first read. That's the amendment that Twenty, Twenty-five, Twenty-two challenges to reading materials. Any comments? Next, we have item for public, public hearing, thirteen items for public hearing this month. All of these items are for instructional materials. At the meeting, the public hearing will be held during the agenda public forum, and then once we get this sec, get to this section, we will vote on all of these items as a whole. If you look on there, there's thirteen different book items that are up for adoption.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Superintendent, these are all approved items from the state of Florida, right?
Yes.
They, they blessed off every one of them.
Yes.
Okay. What I wanted to hear.
Thank you. We're moving on to number eight, the consent agenda. Moving now to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be discussed, starting with curriculum, Items Eight through Nineteen? Next, we have finance, Items Twenty through Twenty-four. Any discussion, any response? Next, we move into human resources, Items Twenty-five through Twenty-nine. And next, we have operations, Items Thirty through Thirty-nine. And then we have the consent superintendents, which is Items Forty through Forty-two. Lastly, there's one item in, for the board, the superintendent's evaluation, which I believe all of us have had a chance to complete. Any discussion?
Ms. Buswell, can you open up the aggregate final superintendent evaluation? I personally feel that that's a very good evalu, a very good representation of Mr. Leonard's performance, and I stand with it one hundred percent.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I, I agree with Paul. I, I told Keith this last year, he can't go no farther up on my eval. He can only go down, so don't go down. But I would tell you, this man, he calls me on Saturdays, he calls me on Sunday morning. Sometimes I'm worried about whether he's actually getting some rest, you know, or he's meeting with his team on the weekend. We had schools that had Ds and Fs that didn't have it this time around, you know? All schools had a C or better. I would like to see you continue the path you're doing. You're doing a great job. You're getting known throughout the community pretty good, even with downtown people. The Children's Trust, with you and David Williams on there, has been fabulous. I mean, y'all are, y'all are bringing it along. I mean, what we're gonna do with Global and which, what was other school?
I see what I was.
See, no.
Oh, um, Sims.
Sims, got two, two, two schools going with all those wraparound services because we know that them children that are coming out of poverty have to have those wraparound services. They have to have them. And it is, if it weren't for y'all's good work along with Lindsay Cannon and others, we wouldn't have that, and I appreciate it. But Keith, thank you for, for everything you're doing. And I will tell you, it's a competitive time with students. I, I hope you and the staff move quickly where you, you can see that we can capture students or do something to offer more choice options. I hope staff moves along quickly with you because it's a different time now. So, but Keith, appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burgash. Did you have any comments before we move on?
I'd like to say a few words.
Yes, I would like to say, I was still in there this morning, but I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. And Mr. Leonard, you're doing a fantastic job working with the district. I know as a school board member, I've been aboard for about three weeks, but I worked with you in the past in my, my previous position, and I would just like to say thank you for your leadership and your dedication to our students and our staff. And it also shows that you're working well with the other, you have great leaders, you're working well with them as well to help improve our, our education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harold?
Uh, Mr. Leonard, I want to congratulate you for the excellent job that you're doing here in the district. I said this to you the other day, and I said, when you took office, our district was in great need of a new superintendent. And when you took office, there was a calm after about two weeks that came over the district. And the reason that happened is because the community trusts you, you know? There's been significant improvement in student performance, as pointed out by the other board members. I gave you highly effective and a perfect score because I think you're the right person at the right time to lead our district, you know? And I think you're doing an excellent job. You exemplify integrity, honesty. You're the same each day when people see you, and you're working diligently, doing everything that you humanly possibly can to move this district forward in a very positive manner.
Thank you.
So having said that, I'm very pleased that your aggregate score was highly affected overall from all the board members, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Any more comments? We'll move on now. There's nothing for Item Forty-four, Forty-five, or Forty-six, nothing from general counsel. Under Forty-six, we have public forum. I do not have any forums of any speakers. Anything else for the good little board?
Yes, sir. I need to make sure I say something or I'll get in trouble. It's difficult when, and I think Ellen probably knows exactly how I feel, when you have to have a public evaluation. You've heard me, I think this group's heard me say it, say this before. I know our teams heard me say it before, and it was, this was ingrained in me by a little old bitty fella that I was probably more scared to death of than anybody that ever walked in my lifetime. He said, you know, pat on the back is only sixteen inches from a kick in the rear. Now, he used, he used different language, but it really is the truth. You know, I talked to our principals earlier this year, and then I talked to our team about this years of late. We've had a lot of, I think I told, told y'all this as well, this first semester, which is, you know, seven days from being over, a lot of noise, a lot of, well, I've seen you voicemails, messages, call you and tell you about different things that are going on in our school district. We have great leadership at our schools. We have great district leadership, but some things you just absolutely have zero control over until after they occur. And then you have to be able to respond, react, and do the things you, you need to do. And I know people talk about, and I do as well, because we're, we're proud of what we've been able to achieve academically, fourteen, twelve, twenty-five, and one. You know, we talk about the As, the Bs, the Cs, and the Ds. I have no idea, I don't think anybody, Mr. Bobbitt might could tell you what we're gonna end up having school grade wise at the end of this year. I think it'll be, I think it will improve from what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing. You know, we took PM Two before we get out for break, and that actually saves us about seven weeks of instruction. Soon as we get back, we'll be able to get started on it. But I don't want anybody to lose sight that there's, and I know you do not, but I wanted to make sure I said this publicly. The fourteen, twelve, twenty-five, that, that's really, really important, okay? And that's how a lot of people are gonna judge what we do. But what if it was fourteen, twelve, twenty-three, and three? Did it change what we've done? Did it change how hard people worked? No. No. So, don't, let's don't lose sight of what our real mission is, and that's to prepare students to be successful in school. And I say it all the time, but most importantly, so that they'll have an opportunity to be successful in life. And that's, this evaluation that y'all give me is really based upon what our other leaders do in our school district and, uh, the students that we have, so I'm very, very proud of each one of you. So, thank you for that time, Mr. Williams.
Thank you for Coach Madison keeping you humble, so, um, appreciate that. Anything else for the, for the good?
Yes, sir, uh, something the superintendent said causes me to have a question that, um, this past year, their part of the, the grading system was that statewide, the numbers of As, Bs, Cs, D's, and Fs would remain the same. Okay? And, and I guess either Ms. Wilkins, Mr. Bobbitt, somebody, has that changed?
Yeah, I think I can tell you the answer to that, they'll, Holly will be happy to tell me if I'm wrong. The scale that was used at the end of last year to give us grades will be used this year. Then, they will take a look at that at the end, when we all get our grades, to see if they need to adjust that for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, so that we're not, statewide will not be held, that you can ha, only have statewide X number of As, X number of Bs, X number of Cs?
I've not heard that.
Okay, so that, that's gone away. So, improvement in the schools will, um-
Elementarys need to be a forty-one, middle schools, high schools need to be a forty-four, that's to be a C, that's what it will be. Now, I can't tell you what a B is and a A is, but-
Well, and anecdotally, in, in rounding in schools and asking how progress monitoring is going, both the, the first and second now, there's things that are coming back already, um, things are looking good. But, but I would hate for somebody to improve by a certain number of points and then be held to the same grade. So, the, the ability to raise a letter grade will be there, and that's a good thing. Thank you, thank you.
Just for confirmation, is it, they, they've already told you from the Department of Education, there won't be a sliding rule, uh, ruler on this? Or they just hadn't done it so far?
Mr. Bobbitt, you can approach to, call you.
I, I just want that confirmed. Good afternoon. Uh, the rule is, once a level of, of school reaches seventy-five percent As and Bs, for that level, the scale will go up. So, but it will not go up for that year, we won't, it will affect the following year.
Following year.
So, for this past year, for example, seventy-two percent of high schools in the state made an A or B. If they make it seventy-five percent this year for the twenty-five, twenty-six school grade, what it takes for A, B, C in high school will go up.
So, they're still gonna try to make sure the same number of D's and F's?
No, it's just the scale. The scale will shift up each time.
Size that, though, right?
Every, every time a section, a sec, a set of schools reach that, the scale will go up. The goal in the legislature is eventually, and I think you've asked this before, will be where a ninety is an A, an eighty is a B, and so on, and we are very far from that. But, uh, that's, that's the rule, is every time a C level makes it there. For example, it was only sixty-one percent of middle schools were at A or B, so they're nowhere near that next level, but high schools are close.
That could be a good legislative action.
That was, that was just added into the legislature in twenty-two, so that's a brand-new rule.
Okay. Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, one more thing, thank you, Jim, I'm good. This cross tag just reminded us that we need to, it's a very brief meeting, needs to be hopefully the last Thursday in January, the out-of-field meeting that we do, eight o'clock, eight-thirty, whatever you wanna do.
Okay.
I'm sorry, um-
That's, this is my fault, because we didn't realize, I, I did not realize F T U week was the first week in February, so it's not, it's not Mr. Leonard, this is Kelly.
Okay. All right.
So, what day are we looking at the, the, um, last Friday in January?
Either Thursday or Friday.
Best to y'all.
I, I will be out of town.
He said last Friday, that's the thirty-first? I'm okay with it, I'm good.
Oh, you're saying thirty-first?
Yeah.
January thirty-first.
January.
Oh, January thirty.
Yeah, January.
Ms. Burgash, are you available, January thirty-first? Ms. Burgash?
Okay, can tell that, January thirty-first, yes, I'll be here.
Okay.
What time?
Whatever time y'all wanna do it that morning.
Seven o'clock?
Seven sounds good. What, what did you say, Mr. Williams? Nine, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock A.M., be fair.
Thank y'all, thank you very much.
I'm high school, so we're used to getting up early now.
Okay, nine o'clock.
Okay, if there's nothing else, um, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Also, Ms. Buswell, the, the, um, school board members would like to meet with you real quickly up here, if you wouldn't mind.